Greetings and welcome Ipswich. Thanks for joining us. My name is Tom Murphy, and I'm here with the three candidates running for the two-year seats on the select board. With me is Greg Churchill, Carl Nyland, and Charlie Sapitsky. So we're going to start with just a couple of minutes for each of them make an opening explanation of their goals. And we'll go through a few questions they've all seen, and then we'll have time for each to provide you with concluding comments. As I said to the folks who are here for the three-year seats, I've been downtown to Town Hall a few times, and I hear a lot of people before the select board, but I don't hear a lot of gratitude. So I want to tell you, thank you very much for putting your hand in the air and being willing to do this. It's a time-consuming job, and someone needs to do it, and we're glad and we're fortunate that we have so many people running. So why don't you each take, Greg, start with you, a couple of minutes to sort of tell folks why you're running?
Thanks, Tom. First of all, I'd like to thank ICAM for giving us this opportunity. Thank you for being here and taking care of this. My name is Greg Churchill. I've lived in Ipswich for 50 years. I ran a small oil heat company, four thirty of them. I've raised my family here. I have two, my wife and two daughters. Because I've sold my business, I have an opportunity now to give back to the community a little more than I had the opportunity before. And I've always felt a passion to be involved. I've been involved with a few different boards on the outskirts of things, youth lacrosse, things like that, La Heep, Catholic charities, so sort of in the back scenes. I think it's important to volunteer. I spoke with both Carl and Charlie, and I think it's a great opportunity that people are volunteering as it is. And I think it's something that we all have a passion for. So I'm here for that.
You're welcome. Carl?
Greg, thank you. I'll second the thanks to ICAM, Tom, to you for hosting, particularly to Charlie and Greg, for, as you say, being willing to put their names out there. It's great to see some competition for these seats, because I think it's better dialogue for all of us, a little more choice for the people that are making decisions. Running for a two-year seat, a little bit of personal history. My wife and I have been in town for 23 years. I won't win the longevity award in this crowd, for sure, but I did realize when I say that 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 is twice as long as I've ever lived anywhere in my life. And we're here to stay. We love the town, and we're happy we're here. It's been good to us. We've raised two kids here, two girls, that have come up through the Ipswich schools, graduated from Ipswich High, gone on to good college careers and professions after that. My wife works as an educator, works at the Winthrop Elementary School here in town, runs their English Language A-Learner program. I work in the technology field. I run a business development team that looks, uses technology with organizations, mostly in the state and local government space, to improve operations, governance, that sort of thing. Pretty much what I do is what runs the town, so it's familiar to me. I've had a number of opportunities to volunteer in various capacities here. I did nine years, served nine years on the school committee. I've been on the steering committee of the Community Development Plan, was on the strategic planning work group. I've been on the open space committee. I'm currently a member of the Climate Resiliency Committee, was on the Athletic Field Study Committee. So I've had great opportunity to participate in some civic responsibilities and volunteer opportunities. And I guess when people say, "Why are you running?", there's primarily two, I guess, big issues that I'm interested in. I'm interested in everything, but the two biggest issues are investment and affordability. And by investment, I mean continuing to see the town invest in the things that we need to take care of, our bridges, our roads, our buildings, our utilities. There are lots of needs there, as everybody probably well knows, and we have a lot of work ahead of us. All of those investments put strain on people, financial strain, and that's where the affordability issue comes in. And what I'd really like to see us do is build something like what I'm thinking of as kind of an affordability plan for the town, to figure out how we can try to alleviate some of those costs for vulnerable populations, so people that want to stay can, people that want to move in can also. So that's what I hope to work on.
Okay. Charlie, you've been here before, so why don't you tell us again?
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you, ICAM, and thank you to the citizens who are taking the time to watch this program. It certainly is appreciated. Thank you also to the two gentlemen to my right. I applaud you for running. I think it's great, once again, to have competition and to have an exchange of ideas. It's always great. A little bit about myself. I am a lifelong resident of Ipswich. I was born here, and present live at, on Upper River Road. I have two children, both grown. My wife and I have been married for 53 years, quite an accomplishment.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And we are all products of the Ipswich Public Schools, and I have grandchildren that are in the schools presently. I have, my professional career has been in public service, specifically in public safety. I joined the police department as a young officer, patrolman, came up through the ranks, was the chief of police. And then in the early '90s, when the town reorganized into five super departments or directorates, they call, so-called, I was placed in charge as the Director of Public Safety. So I was in charge of seven separate departments and everything that had a siren, a blue light or a red light or a yellow light, both on the harbors or on land, shellfish, as well as emergency management. It really represented about 25% of the municipal budget, and we successfully, or I successfully did that for approximately 14 years. In 2009, I decided to run for the Board of Selectmen. I was elected, served two more terms, elected or re-elected twice, and then left in 2017. Today, I, my, my passion for the town and for public service has rekindled, and I have decided once again to throw my hat and self into the fray, and I feel really compelled to do that. And I think that my temperament, my experience, and certainly my knowledge of town government will help to move the town forward, and I look forward to that happening.
Okay, thanks. So first question is fairly broad, but open and take it wherever you wish. What's your understanding of the duties and responsibilities of the select board?
I believe, I've got some written out. I believe the duties of the select board are to work with the finance and town manager, create policies and best practices. Also, I believe that the leadership role is important with the public bodies and officials. Long-term planning is something that I believe is crucial, and I believe that that's something that maybe hasn't been done in the past, or I feel it's not as complete as I would like it to be, and that's one of the reasons I think I want to run for this position. Now, there's other things that I believe that can be accomplished, or the select board can do, and then I think that is to bring more community. We have a, we have a great community, but I think it's also something that we can build on, because if in fact we do that and we bring people together, and what I mean by community is the opportunity to interact and speak with each other and not talk at each other, then I also believe that if that starts to happen, then we can draw and create a consensus. And I believe the consensus is something that is important. You can't always get your way, but if we have a consensus that we can aim for and get to, that's going to allow the change to happen and deal with the infrastructure, deal with the issues that are important to us, and the things that we need to deal with. These gentlemen know what's important, what has to be done in this community. The people know what has to be done. So I think if we attempt to do those kinds of things, I think it's something that's going to make us more successful and improve the quality of life for us and our residents.
Okay, thank you. Carl, your thoughts?
Well, it is a daunting list of responsibilities. Charlie knows well from serving on the board. I guess I would highlight as might be the primary responsibilities, the hiring and supervision of the town manager, the review and oversight over the budget, town budget, as well as that of the water, wastewater, electric light department, and the creation of our town warrants for the town meetings, approval of those. In addition, there's a number of other responsibilities, approving permits and licenses, making appointments to boards and committees. They do act as commissioners to both the water, wastewater department and the electric light department. So it's a pretty daunting list of tasks. I think I would highlight in particular the role the select board plays as kind of community leaders. I think they're often looked to maybe as a, as a committee or a board of first resort, sometimes as last resort, when people are wondering who to go to for leadership on a particular issue. It's the select board they turn to. And I think I would also highlight the importance of, the essential importance of building a strong relationship between the Board of Selectmen and the town manager. That's what makes a high-functioning team and allows us to move forward on big issues. So I would spend time in making sure there's a strong relationship there.
And I would think that that changes from manager to manager.
Sure.
Because they all have different styles.
Yep.
Charlie, your thoughts on that? Maybe not what they are, but what are the top important ones to you of the responsibilities?
Well, you know, I think the duties of the selectmen probably are all important, actually. You know, they have, they appoint the most important managers of many departments, the keepers of the books. You know, for example, you know, the town manager is the chief executive officer on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, but they also appoint the town accountant, the treasurer collector, the keeper of the money, which I, you know, are critical, they, relative to transparency and oversight. They also appoint the electric light manager. I mean, that's a huge, you know, technical operation that generates and spends millions of dollars every year. They manage the trust funds and appoint the trust fund administrators, and they also appoint the members of the zoning board of appeals, where people go to, you know, resolve issues relative to planning. So those duties are essential. You know, I think the second group of duties are equally essential. Carl touched on them a bit, the budget. It is their budget that is presented to the town meeting, even though it's, you know, the nuts and bolts are prepared by the town manager. It's thorough review, I think as other people have stated as well, that they go through it line by line, item by item, and, you know, it really is the biggest policy decisions of the town, you know, show the direction of the town. They also, you know, serve as commissioners for the shellfish department and shellfishing in general, the electric light department and the water department. They hold public hearings on a variety of issues relative to traffic and stop signs and no parking and all those kinds of things. And they also, I think, really should show a leadership role in the community, and as Greg pointed out, be the conduit to resolve issues that are controversial. You may not reach consensus, but you certainly, they should encourage at least compromise. And I think that that is probably, you know, one of the most important steps that they can take to combine, you know, can, can, not control, but to listen and move the town forward in a conscientious way.
As an example, like noise control, complaints of noises, you know, down by Atlantic Center and true north, I've seen a number of those issues come before the select board.
And some of those issues are very difficult to solve.
Yeah, because we all live in the same town, and we all got to get along.
You know, I think that they make a, in that example, I think they've made a pretty good, a pretty good effort to control the hours that noise, you know, happens, which, you know, should be helpful. And, you know, I also think that it's, it's the community, and it's happy noise sometimes. You know, it's not, you know, it's not loud mufflers, it's not fighting, it's not yelling, and, and those are difficult issues, no question about it, to solve.
So Greg, that question, this is a little bit more personal. Describe three of your traits that most qualify you to be on the select board.
Okay. Sometimes they're relatively generic, but first of all, I believe I've got a, I'm pretty good with common sense. I believe it's something that I've had for a long time, but having to run my own business, I think common sense was a definite, definite attribute, to try to figure out and solve issues and start at a baseline. A good foundation allows you to create a better result, so that's something I think is extremely important. Next thing would be vision. I believe I've had a vision of this community for a long time, and a lot of it has not panned out. Because I'm not as in-depth and as aware of some, maybe a couple of these gentlemen, it might be pie in the sky, but I also believe that having a vision of what you want and trying to attain that goal is something that is possible. Delegating is huge with regard to that, and so I think there's a combination of issues there, or a combination of things there that can make that, make that work. The third one is, is that, or one of, another one is, is that I've been in this community, and I joked about this for a long time, is that besides being in this community, I've been in a lot of people's homes, and I get to know the people, people get to know me, and they just were happy when I came to give them heat. So that was one aspect of that anyways. But getting the flavor of the community and being able to speak with some of these people, we hung out and held signs last weekend at Five Corners, and the people that came by and beeped and waved and actually sometimes pulled over and shook my hand was something that I realized was a strength. I think it's something that, again, it's part of that baseline or a strong foundation. I think I can build off that, and I think that's, those are three of the qualities that maybe can help me with respect to the select board.
Okay, thank you. Carl, three traits that most qualify you to be in this position?
Yes, I thought about the traits. I guess I focused on that word rather than, say, experience or qualifications. I probably would single out maybe, or note three things. One I would say is that I'm curious. I'm curious about everything. I'm curious about people, I'm curious about how things work, I'm curious about why they work the way they do. There's a, if you're familiar with the TED Talks, the guy, Richard Saul Warman, who founded it, he has this saying that before we should seek to act, we should seek to understand. And it's sort of a principle I like, because it's kind of how I approach things. If I'm going to tackle an issue, I try to understand it first, because I'm curious, and then take some action on it. So that's one. Second is, I guess I would say determination, pretty goal-oriented, I like to finish what I start, no matter how long it takes, and some of the issues we have to tackle here in this town take a long time. I remember our school building project is a good example. But eventually, if we keep at it, we'll get there. So, and all the things that I've undertaken in volunteer or elected office was because there was a need to address an issue, something I thought it could help with, and I think in all cases, we were able to accomplish some things because I stuck with it, and I want to get things done. So that's second. Third, I would say is probably respectful. Maybe it's just the way, probably we all were, I was certainly raised, mostly to respect people and get to know them a little bit, because everybody has a story to tell, and until you know what their story is, you don't really know the person. And I think we need to conduct ourselves on the board the way we want other people to treat us, and that respect builds understanding, and that understanding builds, I think, the opportunity for more consensus on difficult decisions.
Charlie, your thoughts on this topic?
Thank you, Tom. The first trait, and I think is important, is knowledge. I have tremendous knowledge of the system. I've worked in the system. I know, you know, how to get things done, managed a major portion of it, a better selectmen. So that, you know, I bring those, that characteristic and that trait, you know, to the board. I think the second is the way that we make decisions. I'm a person that asks hard questions, wants to get to the bottom of the issue, wants to listen to all viewpoints, and then, you know, make a decision that has all the facts in it, and hopefully be able to, to move that forward as a consensus or at least a compromise, so that we can get things done. And the last thing is honesty and transparency. I believe what I say, and I do what I say, and, you know, if mistakes are made, I take responsibility for them, and I praise folks who do things right. I don't, you know, try to take credit when, you know, it's not all my doing. So those, those are three things that I think that, you know, would lend itself well to this board and the board in the future.
Okay, and the last question is more prospective. How can Ipswich improve its tax base and pay for the things that we need and still maintain its quality of life?
This is, everybody knows this, this is an amazing question, and I've thought about this a little, and I've actually got a couple of different options or opportunities to mention that. Tax bases, we're walking a tight rope right now, and with some work, I don't think it has to be that way. I'd like to attempt to go in a different direction, and what I would like to do is be a net producer as opposed to a net consumer. And what I mean by that is there's two things that come to mind immediately. One of them is our lack of water resources. The ACOM did a study in 2019 about the water usage and where we were going to get it. There are six or seven options there, and one of them that didn't get really mentioned or gone over was desalination. I think that's an important point right now because of our wastewater warrant and along with our water and piping infrastructure that's going to be taking place at town meeting. Their desalinization project was thought to be happened at Fowler's Lane, where the wastewater treatment plant is. So I think that's an opportunity to, again, make us a net producer. Desalinization used to be very expensive. The costs of these things have come way down. It would allow us to restore our, the Ipswich River. Some of the other options were a little more difficult, because when the water table goes down, drilling new wells and all that, or building the dower, the reservoirs, Bullbrook, that water level goes down too. The other thing is, is watching and seeing what's been going on with the Bruny project. That's, this is something that's cost a lot of money for just going through the motions. This is a reach, but I was always wondering if that, the town could actually buy property and put up affordable housing. It would allow us to control our 40B, it would allow us to potentially make real low income or lower costs of living. And then I would, I would have mentioned that quite possibly what would happen is then we could bring in new teachers, new municipal workers, people that could actually afford to live in this community.
You mean the town buy the Bruny project?
No, well, the land. Because one of my concerns is this. I have, I have a lot of feelings for people that own some of these larger parcels of land in this community, Bruny, Gordon's Florist right next door, Marini's Farm. I live in Pinefield. I've always utilized Marini's produce, because I was always worried that if we didn't sustain that, we, I would have all kinds of housing right next door to me. Now, back in the '70s, '60s and '70s, when they built Pinefield, people saw, thought the same thing. But it's become more of a concern, it's become more of an issue, and I think it's something that, it's something that should at least be looked at. The way we're going with the project now, lawyers are making all the money.
Carl, your thoughts on this, increasing the tax base but maintaining quality of life?
Yeah, I think those two ideas go hand in glove. I think a healthy community has an ever-but-sustainable and growing tax base. That is what supports the kind of quality of life that people want. And specific things I think are worth pursuing or continuing to pursue. One would be to make sure that we have growth as part of our revenue production, right? So as probably most people know, our taxes are limited by Proposition Two and a Half. The only way we can exceed that is by what's so-called new growth. That new growth is new development. So we have to do that in a sustainable way, but that's a really important part of our revenue picture. So that's one thing. Secondly, I think investing in, or doing more investment in kind of our commercial corridors, I'd use the plural on that, people focus on the downtown, which is important, but we have the Route One corridor, which I think there's a lot of potential, more potential in, and then we have a couple of industrial park areas that I think could stand further development. I think pursuing creative incentive programs like we did with the Great Estates by law, but I think as you noted in the previous discussion, brought us New England Bio Labs. I don't know how many more New England Bio Labs there are out there we can attract, but I think those kinds of creative incentives we should continue to pursue as well. And then I think, less on the revenue production side, but more on, so the revenue conservation, I think we should look to extend the financial resources we have. One, through looking to the state to increase the amount of funding and local aid they provide us, particularly, I think, in the area of education, where a lot of the costs we incur are from mandates from the state that aren't fully funded. And I also think that we, if we make some smart decisions about how we make the infrastructure investments we need to, we can lower the operational costs and the burdens that come from things like the buildings that we build, and then we can either use that money to lower the tax burden or to reinvest in other projects.
Changing the local aid formula. I worked in the legislature when I was in law school in the 1980s, and they were talking about it then. So I just struck that out there.
Difficult, but I will note that, to the state's credit, they have changed the Chapter 70 aid significantly in the past couple of years, so through the foundation aid study that was done. So it is possible.
Yeah, okay. Charlie, your thoughts on this topic?
Yeah, I, you know, I agree with, with, you know, I think there's some great ideas that have just branched around here, and many of them are certainly worthy of further study. I, you know, I, I think it's, it's always difficult when we talk about improving the tax base, you know, and what in fact that means. I think it's even more difficult in today's times. My, my idea would be to create a task force to study what type of business and who and where in the community it could be supported, and then where it could be housed, and really look to attract businesses like New England Bio Labs or even the Aura Project if that goes through, where, you know, they're not only, you know, improving the tax base, but they're also stewards of the environment, which is, which is a good thing. So, you know, I mean, I, I think that takes a lot of effort. I think it takes some professional judgment in how you go about attracting a business or finding a business that's looking to move to a pristine community, but I think it would definitely be worth that effort. I think too, that in these times, we have to be very, very careful that every dollar we spend is money well spent, that it's, it's worthy of the expenditure. I was a selectman during some difficult times, you know, back in the '08, '09, you know, 212 area when we had the real estate crash. And those were very, very tough, difficult decisions that we had to make, and, you know, at the same time being able to, to maintain, you know, the quality of life. So making sure that we're spending money wisely, I think, is really, really very important. And the last thing I think that we need to do is to evaluate programs, especially grant programs, where we receive the money, and really just evaluate them to see if they're producing the way that they should and whether or not they should continue after the grant money runs out.
Okay. Well, thank you. This has been a fruitful conversation. Let's take a few minutes and go in reverse order and give all three of you a chance to sort of sum up your comments and ask for your vote. Charlie?
Thank you. I do ask for your vote on May 16th for, for a variety of reasons. First of all, I'm a proven leader. I'm a proven leader with a record of innovation. When I was a police chief, we did, you know, some marvelous things. We were one of the first in the nation to put a school resource officer in our school buildings. We were the 11th in the state that put automatic defibrillators in our, in our police cruisers. I'm also a leader who has exhibited physical responsibility in running a department and then managing the town, a leader who is thoughtful and who had led thoughtful and difficult resolutions to difficult and complex issue. And I, you know, point to bringing private aquaculture, you know, the potential of private aquaculture into our shellfish industry. A leader who listens. I think everyone's voice is important, and all should be heard and their viewpoints considered. I have no special interest agenda. My only agenda is to improve the town and improve the quality of life in it. And I also am a leader who has earned the confidence of the citizenry through my career in the police department as Director of Public Safety and also as the, as the... in the police department as director of public safety and also as the, as the, as a selectman. I, I really believe that Ipswich's better days are yet to come and will continue to be a leader who just happens to love Ipswich. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl?
Well, thank you again, ICAM and Tom and Greg and Charlie for the time tonight. I agree that there's been some great ideas thrown around here this evening that hopefully we can pursue. I guess I would go back to a couple of comments I made at the outset, which is particular areas of focus that I would like to spend my time on, that of investment and affordability. And the investment side, I guess the point I'd like to make is, and hopefully others agree with this, that there is a, what I often call a kind of generational opportunity we have in front of us to fix and address the infrastructure issues we have with an influx of dollars we'll probably never see again. So we can do this and probably tackle all of our challenges with this funding, but the window of opportunity for that's not going to stay open forever. So we need to take full advantage of it. On the affordability side, I mentioned this idea of creating this affordability plan, which I think is a way of coordinating in part, an effort to coordinate some of the existing programs, but in a way that really targets them to people that need them. I have sort of a theory of action here that says there's a fair amount of, I don't know if it's anxiety or tension in the community about lots of issues, about development, about water, about finances. Some of it's global and out of our control, but some of it is local and in our control. And the sort of theory of action is that if we can tackle some of these problems and resolve them, that can help to lower the temperature and ease some of the anxiety that exists here. I hope that the time I've spent in the public service here, in elected positions, in volunteer positions, give people an opportunity to judge how effective I'd be on the select board. And I hope I get the chance to serve there, and I would ask people for their vote on the 16th.
Okay. Greg?
This was a great opportunity. Thank you, and thank you, gentlemen. I come from more of a grassroots aspect. These gentlemen have experience in some of the different boards. I come from a place that is, again, grassroots. There's a lot of strong feelings and opinions I have, and the things that I can bring to the select board is those fresh new theories or ideas and something that maybe you can follow through with. Carl's right, there's a lot of undercurrent, there's a lot of feelings on both sides. That's why I believe that bringing community, making a consensus, if it doesn't, you can't thoroughly beat consensus, but we also need to give and take and make this happen in our community. I just have a strong feeling, I have an urge, I have a commitment that I think I can make a difference. And I have a lot of people that I know feel the same way. So just thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining me, and thank you, Ipswich. And don't forget to attend town meeting May 9th and vote at the polls on May 16th. Again, the three candidates for three-year seats in the select board, and you can vote for two. And these three candidates for the two-year seats on the select board, you can vote for two of them. And then there's the school committee race, and we'll speak to that tomorrow night. Thank you very much.